Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Tuesday, October 7th. Time is 9:00 a.m. Let's all stand and open the meeting with a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Reagan.
President.
Mr. Rand.
President.
Here. Okay, we have a big agenda today. We'll try to get through this before lunch. So we have some announcements, Employee of the Month?
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. We have two Employee of the Month nominations. And being that this is fall break week, neither the presenter nor the recipients are here. So I'm going to read the statements. So the first one for the Justice Center was nominated by Jeff Hansard. It is Brianna Massey. She goes by Bree. It says Bree's been a county employee for the past 10 years, working first in the jail where she made the rank of corporal, and then coming to the juvenile probation department in 2022. We were all very excited when Bree expressed an interest in becoming a PO because we were all aware of her reliability, the quality of her work, not to mention her incredible work ethic. Every probation officer, despite doing essentially the same job, has certain aspects of the role where they show their natural strengths and gifts, and they begin to show through. One of Bree's gifts is an ability to connect with some of our most difficult clients, those being the delinquent girls. Bree began leaning in and taking these tough cases, which the other probation officers appreciated, and being firm, fair, and consistent. She was able to make many of these girls feel supported enough that they began to open up about what was really going on in their lives, which in many of these cases ended up being that they were victims of human trafficking. Because of Bree, information started coming to light that no one would have otherwise received. And while it's difficult to hear that so many girls right here in Muncie are being trafficked, it's also clear that without Bree, many of them would have remained undetected. She helped expose the reality of the situation, and then by reporting and working with law enforcement, CASA, DCS, and others, many of these girls have been able to get into safer situations. Bree was recently asked to give a list of names of the girls that she had on her caseload for the past few years, and with very little effort was able to reel off more than 30 names off the top of her head. So when I think about Bree, and to be deserved and being deserving and being recognized and doing the tough work in difficult situations, that makes a real difference. Bree has taken on some of the most challenging cases in our department and turned them into opportunities. For these girls to find a safe chance at a better life, that impact is rare. It's probably the most important thing we can do in our community, and we're lucky to have Bree on our team. So we want to recognize Bree Massey as the Employee of the Month at the Justice Center. The Employee of the Month here in the county building is Lee Royal. Lee works in Human Resources, who she was nominated by Jenna Kalin and myself. So we're pleased to nominate Lee Royal for Employee of the Month in recognition of her outstanding contributions, unwavering professionalism, and consistent support to the Human Resources Department and our entire organization. Lee's reliability, collaborative spirit, and initiative embody the values we strive for as a team. Lee is not only a key asset to the Human Resources Department, but a true team player whose work impacts the entire organization. Beyond their core duties, Lee goes above and beyond to ensure employees feel supported and heard. She consistently handles sensitive matters with discretion, empathy, and making her a trusted point of contact for staff across all departments. Her attention to detail, responsiveness, and positive attitude have made a noticeable difference in the daily operations. So congratulations to Lee Royal.
Lee's done a great job, and I appreciate all she's done for us. Next, we have some board appointments. Does anyone have anything to add to these board appointments?
Yes.
Go ahead, no updates from me.
I do have a young lady that's a farmer out of Eaton, Cindy Jeffries. And she is very active with the Farm Fest. And I'd like to place her on our last slot right now that we have open for the Fair Board.
I'll second that.
What's her name again?
Cindy Jeffries.
Did you get that, Ed?
Yes, thanks.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Under table business, we have the solar motorium. Move forward. We have BW facility maintenance agreement.
Leave it on the table.
We have the universal roofing contract.
I'd like to remove that.
A second.
We have a motion to remove that contract from the table, and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Reagan.
President White out of the fairgrounds. He was able to get a couple other quotes that he wanted to have us look over. And the one that he really likes is the DCL Company. They're local. And their bid for the same work was $9,510 for the log cabin cedar roof. They were going to do it the very same way as the other individual. I make a motion that we approve Dan's request.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve a quote for DCL to roof the cabin out at the fairgrounds, and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have the 613 North Broadway. We still really can't do anything with that yet, can we?
I'd like to make a motion to remove it from the table so we can discuss it.
Okay. Motion to remove. In a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Brand.
So this is in the deed sale, and the deed sale now has been pushed to, I believe, next year sometime, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Carroll. So the people in Albany have been living with this burnt-out house now for several years. And when this made the deed sale list, the town of Albany approached and asked if we would be willing to deed this over to them. So seeing as the deed sale now is not going to happen until, you know, I don't know when next year, but sometime next year, I would like to discuss here in front of the public whether we deed this over to Albany or not. I would be in favor of doing so, so that they, and they're willing to tear it down. We wouldn't have to pay it down, we wouldn't have to tear it down.
Is that a motion?
John?
Mr. Brooke, is that, can we legally do that?
We have, there's a process. I think this is one of the properties that we can get the, we can get the court to approve the deed on. Once the deed is approved to the Commissioners, then the Commissioners can transfer it to the town of Albany by resolution. So let me check on this one. But if the board has the intent of transferring this to Albany, then I will see what we can do to make, make sure that gets done.
So do we need a motion to approve the court to process this?
Well, I think the motion would be to, the motion would be made to approve the transfer to Albany, provided the deed can be transferred into the name of the county.
I'd like to make a motion to transfer this to the town of Albany, provided the deed can be transferred from the county.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have property requests. Would you like to do with it? Anything?
Nate's out there. I'd like to remove it.
A second.
We have a motion to remove this from the table, and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Howard.
Will you turn on your microphone?
Excuse me. Nate Howard from the Muncie Land Bank. I was here, I think, two Commissioner meetings ago and was asked to double-check the list and then also bring before my board which properties they'd be willing to pay for. And I communicated that with, with you all, and I'm here to ask, answer any questions or make any clarifications.
So these are in the deed sale, and I think this has boiled down to five separate properties. 818 South Blaine, 1317 East First, 1419 East First, 921 East First, and 501 South Proud. Is that correct?
Yes, we had, the list, we had reduced to 13, and five we were, we were able to pay for, and the other eight willing to receive if the Commissioners wanted to pass those along. If not, yeah, we were willing to pay for those five. The minimum bid is what was asked.
Eight hundred ninety-five.
Yes.
We appreciate that, or I do.
So we have, we have quite a bit of money in this deed sale already, and it's going to get a little more expensive, so.
What would you like to do?
I'm ready to give it to him for $895 each, five of those.
I'll second.
We could hold off on the others.
We have a motion to do these five that were stated, and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
John, could you turn your mic on, please? Yep.
Forgot about that. I will work on the deeds for this one. I'll have to, I couldn't write them down as fast as you guys were reading them, but I'll, I'll get the list, okay?
Just, just real quick, can we go back to 813 North Broadway again? What, what was your recommendation on that again, John?
It's in the deed sale. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. It's in the deed sale, so I believe this is one that where we can, we can ask the court to issue the deed. And then, once the deed would, the deeds are issued to the name of the Commissioners, the county. Then the county can then transfer that by resolution as they do all property that they own to other municipal entities and/or not-for-profit, so.
Without going through the public bidding process.
Right, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was on record with your mic on. Thank you.
Yep.
Next, we have the Delaware County American Tower audit lease.
I would like to keep that on the table because I made a counteroffer to them, and I haven't heard back from them yet.
I wouldn't be opposed to quoting that out.
The Marathon contract.
Motion to remove from the table.
Second.
We have a motion to remove that contract from the table, and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
So Ally is here today. Ally, hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Can you just give us a quick overview of what we're looking at?
Yeah, absolutely. So you all have received-
Say your name and who you're with, please.
I'm Ally Weedow with Marathon Health. So you all have received an updated proposal and an updated contract with the specifications to what this agreement would entail. This would be primary care services for Delaware County employees and their families if so chosen, as well as mental health services, health coaching, as well as a little bit of occupational health, all done at the Marathon Health Clinic here in Muncie.
So we visited the Marathon Clinic, which is in Lindaber Plaza, probably five weeks ago, something like that. And we've been back and forth a couple times on this contract. We also sent notification to IU BMH that we were going to not continue the services with them. And just for clarification, there have been a lot of questions about when does that service end? Not until March 2nd of next year. So county employees can still go to the IU BMH clinic until March 2nd of this, of next year. This is a pretty significant savings, even if we add on these additional services which are in the packet today.
Are there any questions of Ally?
I'm ready to adopt them.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adopt, and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward.
Get started. Next, we have an agreement for tax sale legal services.
Make a motion to remove that from the table.
Second.
We have a motion to remove that from the table, and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Mr. Polk.
Yes. So the last Commissioners' meeting, I presented an agreement with Buchanan and Bergen Schmidt attorneys for the tax sale to switch to them for that. And then, I believe it was put on the table. And then, we sent that to the Commissioners. And then they, you guys were passing that on to, to Brooke and Struble to examine and go, get back. And, and so, we did get a letter back from yesterday from, I believe it was you, Shannon, and Mr. Henry, and also from the attorneys, and the response on that. And so, at this time, it is still on the table. I would like to still have a conversation with the all parties involved in the tax sale, which is the three Commissioners, current attorney Brooke and Struble, as well as Ed Carroll, who is administrator of the tax sale, and then myself as treasurer for the tax sale. I would still like to have a meeting. I, we tried to get back and forth between emails, trying to get something in place, and, and we just couldn't get dates worked out where everybody could be there. But I'm proposing to have a meeting if we could. The next, after the next Commissioner meeting, which will be on October 20th, which is after the tax sale, I understand. But moving forward, I think those are, I think that would be very beneficial to, to all parties concerned on that. So I would like to see if we could do that. And then, maybe just then to keep it back on the, still remain on the table, put it back on the table for, until after that meeting that we have.
I'm more than willing to have a meeting. Absolutely.
Okay.
Let me ask a question. So the meeting on October 20th, I understand that's a complicated mix of schedules, that's fine. But that's after the tax sale.
Yes.
So the meeting is not to discuss approving your request here. The meeting is to discuss processes and procedures.
Right, right. Processing, and, and also then going forward into next year for the tax sale. One of the, in the letter, one of the questions on the contract was determining that appropriation was made by county council. And that was made last year for legal services for the tax sale. It is, it is in my current budget. And then it is also was asked of this next year's budget and was approved September 23rd at the, at the council meeting that they approved the budget. I have the line item that the money is in for, for professional services. I can, I can read that off, or if you guys need to know that, or I'm sure Ed could get that to, to everybody, out to everybody, or I could, or someone could get that out to everybody. But we do have money set aside for the, for next year's professional services for the tax sale. That's on there, as well as with the, we also pay our bank fees out of that line item. So it's for professional services that we have, so.
For the record, I think you said they're in some 30 counties doing this.
Yes, yes. They, they work with, our vendor that we have for the tax sale currently is SRI. They are in 86 of the 92 counties they do tax sales for. And then, the attorneys work with those counties and, and what you stated, Sheri. Yes, they, they work with several counties. I know they are looking at a couple more counties, adding those to them as well. The gentleman that would be the main point of contact, Alex Brogan Schmidt, worked for SRI, has done tax sales, worked in their tax sale legal department for over 10 years, and then has been in his own practice now for five-plus years. So he has lots of experience, and that's all they focus on, is, is tax sales. And so, with the tax sale that we have, every year we set a date, just like we set next Wednesday, October 15th. Then they get us a schedule out to everybody that is concerned with it. And then we work backwards from there. So certain things have to happen on certain dates and those kind of things. So that's what we, he's very knowledgeable on that.
I'll be honest with you. I feel like by hiring a, or contracting a separate legal firm to do this work, the Commissioners lose all control of it. And that's, that's how I personally feel. So I'm, personally, me, I'm not interested in doing that.
We also have a letter here, a memo from our legal counsel, from the Commissioners' legal counsel, that says the review of the contract's been concluded. It's determined that the contract is not acceptable under Indiana laws, not comply with IC 36-2-2.8 as well. So seeing as our follow-up meeting is tentatively scheduled for the 20th, the contract we have in front of us, legal opinion of our counsel says it's not acceptable. My recommendation would be to take a vote on this. I will vote against it, to deny it. And then after our meeting on the 20th, where we have the Commissioners', legal counsel, treasurer, auditor together, if they want to resubmit something later that's compliant, that's, that's a different story. So I would make a motion to deny this contract.
Second.
A motion to deny the contract, and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Yes, as in denying it? Yes, as in denying it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
But we can always-
Let's, let's, let's get together for a meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
If we can schedule that after the Commissioners' meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have the inkeeper's tax.
Motion to remove from the table.
We have a motion to remove, second.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Go ahead, Kathy, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I jumped the gun there.
You're fine. We're just going to remove it, right? And I can just put that in my documentation for the audit?
Yeah, so, so Kathy did what we asked her to do at the last meeting. She went out and got some opinions and practices from other counties. They do not charge inkeeper's tax for people camping at the fairgrounds. So I would make a motion that, yeah.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion for approval of the recommendations she received.
Which is to not charge inkeeper's taxes?
Yes, correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, next, we have an ordinance 2025-20, being resolution approval amended texts of the Delaware County Comprehensive zoning ordinance regarding solar.
Motion to remove from the table.
Second.
We have a motion to remove this ordinance from the table, and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Comments?
The choices for the Commissioners are to accept the changes from the Plan Commission, to reject the changes from the Plan Commission, or to modify those changes and send it back to the Plan Commission based upon what your modifications are. So those are your choices.
So we've had discussion in reference to the property value guarantees. That's what people, the majority of the people want to talk about. And John, you've made some clarifications, not changing the ordinance, but just some clarifications. Do you want to talk about those?
Sure. So there were some questions that were raised by one of the developers' attorneys at a prior meeting, and we delayed this vote because we wanted to discuss those clarifications. And I've discussed this with the Planning Commission Office, our legal counsel, and others. Our current zoning ordinances for Delaware County went into place in 1973, so they're over 50 years old. Every single day, somebody contacts the Planning Commission Office and asks for a clarification. What's the intent? What's the spirit? What's the purpose of this ordinance? And this solar ordinance is not going to be immune from that. It's going to happen every day. So there was a memo put together that'll be provided to the Planning Commission on what the spirit and intent of these, of the language in this is. And I do not wish to modify the current language that's in the ordinance.
You have further comments?
I've often thought that, how that would be regulated and how much homework it would take. So I would favor to remove it completely.
I'd make, make a motion, yes, additional comments?
I'm sorry, you-
On the value, to remove that section.
You want to remove the property value guarantee from the ordinance?
Yes.
So that would be a modification that would go back to the Plan Commission.
Well, I just-
Okay, I mean, that, I just, I was clarifying.
So, but you originally, you originally said, I think, I think, what was the original? You wanted a two-mile?
Yeah, we, in the meeting where the Commissioners heard this the first time, there was a much greater distance for property value guarantee consideration. And we agreed and made a recommendation to the Planning Commission for a half a mile. That's what we agreed on.
But we had originally, in the Commissioner meeting, you had talked about, I think, a mile. I had talked about-
Removing it.
Zero. And you had discussed, you talked about a half mile, and that's kind of what you and I agreed on.
Right.
So you don't want that now. You want to remove it completely. Is that, is that what, is that your motion?
Yeah.
I'm not going to second that.
Okay, let's, let's continue on to-
So officially, that motion would die for lack of second.
Correct. Let's, let's move on to setbacks. That's another, that's another big topic of discussion. The minimum setback, 500 feet. That was, I believe that was done back several times ago in the Planning Commission meeting. Now, the Planning Commission has come back with some information or, or a recommendation that the setbacks set forth and items two, two and three above may be reduced by up to 80% with a written waiver from the property owners. That's, that's new from the Planning Commission.
Correct. Which gives the developers, the property owners, to, an opportunity to reduce even greater than what they're asking for. So we're here, and people ask to go to 250 feet. And this allows them to go to 100 feet if they can-
Yes.
Negotiate. And then there's an additional that allows the F farming zone, I think, 25 feet on the sides and 50 feet front and back if there's a, an empty field with a, without a dwelling.
Right. If a joint property does not contain a dwelling, the regular F farming zone side and rear setbacks of 25 feet and 50 feet respectively shall apply. That's correct. Okay, are there any other additions or corrections?
I'd make a motion to accept the recommendations from the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the recommendations from the Planning Commission. And you're saying the entire ordinance, correct?
Correct.
That's the entire ordinance.
So this is the introduction, is that correct?
Actually, no, this is the approval.
This is the adoption.
The introduction was done at the Planning Commission when they had their public hearing.
Okay.
So we have a motion for approval and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
It's approved.
Now, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to remove the solar moratorium off of the table.
So move.
I'm not going to second it.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bran?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion.
I have a clarifying question, point of order.
Go ahead.
Do we have to have a unanimous vote to remove something from the table?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So do you want to remove the moratorium? You you are not in favor of removing the moratorium?
I'm not, not at this time. I would like to put it out there now that it's out there and see what kind of questions we get. So we can do additional clarifications for the Planning Commission. They're going to get bombarded with questions. And I think that we need to help them clarify those things.
All right, since I don't have a motion to.
Thought we didn't.
Remove this. Well, we removed it from the table.
Oh.
Do I have a motion to remove it? Period. Okay, it's going to it's going to die. It's going to die. Do we want a motion then to put it back on the table?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion to table it and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Bran?
Yes.
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one four, Resolution Delaware County Adopting the Delaware County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I think we have Mr. Kissick.
Mr. Kissick.
How's it going, Commissioners? Corey Kissick, Delaware County Emergency Management Deputy Director.
So this was a plan that needs updated every five years?
Five years, correct.
Five years. And it just was updated.
Yep.
And we all received email copies of it. Director Cutino had a hard copy if anyone wanted it. But we need to officially, I guess we need to remove it from the table.
Make a motion to remove from the table.
Second.
Okay, we removed it from the table and second roll call, Ed?
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bran?
Yep.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. So now we need to adopt this, correct?
Yeah, adopt adopt the plan is the next step. And and just for the record, what for those that do not know what this plan is, this is a a strategical analysis on the hazards in our area and allows our office to identify those hazards and start creating plans to mitigate infrastructure areas of, you know, that could be affected by floods, natural disasters, technological disasters. It allows us to be able to identify and plan before a disaster occurs and also apply for funding to mitigate those those areas of impact.
I think this is a good thing. I'd make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bran?
Yep.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yep.
Thanks for all your work.
All right, next we have the approval of minutes for the meeting September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve with the corrections that are submitted in our packet.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with corrections and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Bran?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
All right, on presentations, we have.
GAI.
GAI, Mr. John Longnecker?
That's right. Thank you. Yes, John Longnecker. GAI, that's our abbreviation. It's actually Guardian Advocates Incorporated. We're a nonprofit organization that serves the local courts in providing guardianships for senior adults and adults that have disabilities. We have done so since two thousand twenty-two here in Delaware County. I'm an attorney in Anderson, grew up northeast of Anderson in Richland Township, a lot of connections with Delaware County, so it was natural for us to expand there. We started our program in Madison County in two thousand eighteen. It's a part of twenty nonprofit organizations and government agencies that run these programs with the local county courts. They're in fifty-two counties. So when we were asked to expand to Delaware and Grant County in two thousand twenty-two, it was a natural thing to do. We knew that with Muncie, an urban area, there would be great need and there has been. I've had two children go through Ball State and we shop probably in Muncie more than we do in Anderson because of our location. The organization, we are a nonprofit corporation under Indiana law. We are court appointed as guardian. And as such, we and if you look at your brochure here and just turn to the inside cover, what we do, I've got the bullet points there that our staff, which are case managers with medical background and and social work backgrounds, we visit and connect with the clients. We really become their family. And we're serving individuals that don't have family. We monitor their health care and housing to make sure. And oftentimes, they're homeless, they're in a hospital, need to be discharged, and so they're without housing. And we help secure that and maintain that they have good well-being in a nursing home, assisted living, or in a group home. We speak up and advocate. Our motto, to protect, to advocate, and to support things that a family member would do. And if any of you have had loved ones in a nursing home, so they're so glad to see you and to have someone on their side. We provide assistance with their finances. We help get public benefits as well. Many times, the hospital nor the nursing home has a payer source, Medicaid or veterans' benefits, or the individual's private funds, because there's no family member, the person is incapacitated, there's no power attorney, no guardian. So we facilitate that. And so we help the local hospitals, we help the local facilities so that they have a payer source so that when they provide the person, they're not losing money with them being there. Our support has included the Delaware County Council. Our first year of operation in two thousand twenty-two, they provided us a ten thousand dollar grant. We are very grateful for that. Our mayor, Ridenhour, in Muncie, has provided twice in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-five, a grant of five thousand from Muncie. We have support from IU Health Ball Memorial Hospital, a twenty-five hundred dollar support. The Delaware County Community Foundation awarded us a five thousand grant. I I share this information because as an entity that supports the program in the county, we are part of a Indiana Supreme Court program called VASSIA, Volunteer Advocates for Seniors and Incapacitated Adults. We get about half of our funding from that state grant. And to receive that, we have to have from the local communities, including Delaware County, a fifty percent match. That's forty-five thousand dollars. And we would ask for support in that way, whether it's for a commitment now for next year, or whether it's something that you put in the budget next year that we can then utilize as part of our match for the two thousand twenty-seven. We do have also a need for volunteers. And so I never speak publicly or with individuals without mentioning that we are a volunteer organization. We have a staff of eight, but eight can only serve so many people when we're visiting once, twice a month minimum, as well as all the calls we take and all the work we have to do. So the volunteers are vital and important. We have volunteers from Delaware County. They're going to the facilities and and and, you know, again, being that contact with the person, being a family member to them. Your own Emily Anderson, who is the court administrator for Delaware County Courts, she has been on our Board of Directors. She's the chairman of the the board, and she's a volunteer as well, visiting multiple people here locally. So we encourage anyone that is looking for a volunteer organization to devote time. It's a really short period of commitment here. We ask for one year. We ask for monthly visits and to be trained. We're much like CASA, except we're CASA for adults. So if you're familiar with the CASA program for children. Again, if if you have any inkling to provide a a grant to help support our operations, we certainly would be appreciative of that. And again, if if you have any questions, I'll I'll pause and see if you have anything. I know I just have a few minutes here.
Do you want to have any questions?
So it's been since two thousand twenty-two since Delaware County supported?
Yes.
And that was at a ten thousand dollar level?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they actually committed at that same time to support us in two thousand twenty-three, ten thousand again. But there was some larger projects that came through and and they said they couldn't, you know, help us. So that's why we've kind of paused on coming back to the county asking for a renewed grant. But at this point, you know, you can see from the insert in the brochure, the bottom part there, the chart, that shows us our our client numbers. And our clients have gone from three in two thousand twenty-two to. We have twenty-nine in Delaware County. And just from July of this year, that's an increase of sixteen clients. So we are we are expecting additional growth. And you can see that's about thirty percent of our three counties that we cover. And the support is, you know, about fifteen percent. So not that we have to have proportional growth or proportional support, but we would certainly appreciate that. We we do have some individuals on the waitlist, too. And so when we secure our funding, then we can continue to serve those as well. Also, you'll note on that chart that a high percentage of our clients have mental health. And so oftentimes, the county entities can access mental health or other medical healthcare dollars. And, you know, these would be individuals with Alzheimer's, with mental illness, with developmental disability. So we'd we'd ask that you consider that as well.
So I I attended all but just a few hours of the budget hearings. I don't recall this being brought up. I don't know that we budgeted for this. Is?
I don't believe.
Council McCants, did he? Is he out there in the hallway?
Thank you.
Or did he leave?
He left.
I think he had to leave. I was wondering if maybe we could table it and ask the Board of Health if they have any leftover monies.
Council McCants, could you take the mic, please? I don't know if you were listening here, but the the GAI, I don't recall budgeting anything for Guardian Advocates Incorporated in the budget this year for next year, do you?
Not specifically, no.
And it's been since two thousand twenty-two, I think, since the county appropriated money. And that was ten thousand dollars. So I don't believe there's anything appropriated.
Not directly for this, maybe under community corrections.
I believe we took some out of edit also. This is a very important program for our community. And people don't realize, and Chief Stanley's in the sitting in the room, and I think he would he would agree with me that when law enforcement gets called on issues involving senior adults or adults with with mental health issues with no family, it's very complicated. It's it's like children and and law enforcement and the courts and and everybody needs someone to turn to to assist these adults. So I I'm going to try to do what I can to try to support.
Yeah.
Support you.
How many? My question is, how many hours of training do you put a volunteer?
So we have a a monthly call, and so there's training in that for our volunteers. But the initial training, we provide three about three hours. We usually break that into two sessions, so it's not overwhelming. But that will allow them to, you know, get an idea of how to approach clients and and deal with them, particularly if they have Alzheimer's and things like that. On the back of the insert, on the other side from where the chart is, just as Commissioner Henry was speaking of, there is a savings from our services. And we've been able to draw data from other counties to show, you know, we we save on hospital ambulance runs, we law enforcement. We've had cases where clients have, you know, called twenty times in one month. And then as soon as we're involved and we're able to get them stabilized, get housing, medical care, those calls are gone, you know? And so there is a savings there.
And you're you're still working with Adult Protective Services out of Madison County?
Yes. Well, actually, FSSA, they have take Medicaid has taken over Adult Protective Services since July first. It's been reconfigured, but Delaware, Madison, Grant County, we're still all in the same district for that. Yeah, we get a lot of referrals from Adult Protective Services, law enforcement, nursing homes, hospitals, you know, individual neighbors, things like that.
Well, I'm going to look into it. I think Commissioner Brogan, you're interested.
Why don't we table it?
I want to support it, too. I just want to know where the money's coming from.
Absolutely.
I think Board of Health.
And what was your specific ask again?
We would like to see a renewal of the ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that allows us to have the match. And again, we realize that the the notice is somewhat short, but our grant is to be turned in in August on October sixteen next week. We don't certainly need the money, but if we have a commitment, like in the minutes or a letter or something, or if if not this time, we certainly will be needing it for next year and would appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move we table.
Second.
A motion to table this request and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bran?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next, we have Delaware County Mental Health Facility.
Morning, Bill Galvin, BW Construction. I'm here today to announce that we have completed the project. I'd like you guys to accept this. And I've brought some of the for the items you guys have asked for for turnover that I can share with you guys after the meeting.
So we all have a copy of the certificate of occupancy?
Yep. So we received it just like a Friday ago, but it was actually dated for September tenth. So I assume the official date is September tenth?
It's actually the, yes, the tenth.
That's what the certificate says, right?
That's what the city announced.
We didn't actually receive it until like Friday ago, right?
Correct. There was a hang up with the fire ordinance.
And then you have all of the design drawings.
All the design drawings.
And the ass belts.
All the ass belts, all of your keys. I have your exhibits from your contract with me that I will leave in your office to review and sign. Your exhibit E, which is your form of completion certificate, and your exhibit F, which is the, I don't think you guys put the exhibit G, which is the quitclaim deed. I don't think you guys put the property in our name. It was a BOT, but we normally fill that out. And I've got miscellaneous notes for turnover and then table contents. I can provide training to anybody you want me to on the turnover documents.
Yep. And then we will be putting the utilities in our name. So currently, the utilities are in BW's name. So Centerpoint Energy, Indiana American Water, Indiana Michigan Electric will be put into our name. And then we will.
We're going to do that approximately next July.
Yeah.
I believe you started working on that last week.
We did. And then, you know, when we when we finally hire an operator there, they'll be responsible for the utility bills. So that'll be transferred again.
Correct. Any other questions?
So, John, do we have to make a motion to accept?
I think we do.
Ownership?
You do.
Yes.
I make a motion.
Accept facility.
To accept ownership responsibility.
I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Bran?
Yes.
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Can I request a copy of those after they're executed? So it comes part of the minutes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I'll wait till after. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ready Grant, Amber Green.
Morning, Commissioners. Amber Green, President of the Redevelopment Commission. I see that you have an ordinance further down on the agenda regarding this Ready Grant. This is money that the Redevelopment Commission received from Ready as a reimbursement. And we are just asking that you create a fund so the Redevelopment Commission does not lose access. And we are just asking that you create a fund so the Redevelopment Commission does not lose access to those funds when they are deposited.
So this is $84,638.98. I believe the money came from ARP originally to do a project in Daleville. And it's been reimbursed from Ready, and we need a fund to put it into so that we have access to it.
This was a Redevelopment Commission project that you guys funded from ARP for economic development. And so that would be put into a fund for the Redevelopment Commission to have access to do other economic development projects.
So, Mr. President, do you want to bounce ahead then to ordinance 2025-21?
Let's go ahead. If you'd like to go ahead and introduce that ordinance.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to introduce ordinance 2025-21?
So moved.
Second.
Rule call, please.
One minute.
We got ahead of him.
Sorry.
That's all right. You said we got till noon, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Actually, we have a stormwater meeting at 11:00.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Can we wait till next meeting to adopt it? There's no, we're not in a hurry, are we?
I would prefer if you could suspend the rules and adopt today because there is a $165,000 check that needs to be deposited.
That's it?
Entertained a motion for suspension of rules?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. A second rule call, please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Entertained a motion for adoption of this ordinance to create this fund to get that money.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Hunter contracts and agreements for approval, the opioid litigation settlement.
This is an approval of two settlements, the Sackler Family Settlement in the Bankruptcy Court, as well as, I can't remember the other, there was another one that settled, and this is just a formal process of approving that settlement. The money will start flowing after all of the various states and municipal entities get their ballot in to approve.
The other settlement was Sandoz.
There you go. That's it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, the drug company, Sandoz. So by agreeing to this, we are agreeing to those settlements.
Yes. And technically, the state of Indiana already has agreed to the settlement, so our hands are kind of tied.
Sort of.
This is, this is formality.
Either, yeah, it's ceremonial, right? Either accepted or you don't, or you don't get the money.
Or you don't get the money.
Yeah.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next, we have the Muncie Mission Clinic Agreement.
Jamie Bane sent an email this morning, said he was not feeling well.
He's ill. He's not here today.
Sent him a message back and said, would you, would you like us to table it? And I haven't looked at my, here we go. He said, I can understand if you need to. However, they're basically continuations of previously approved partnership funding. Approving them would expedite getting the money to the partners.
I believe they are. The one is funding partnership for falling agreed uses of proposed Muncie Mission Medical Clinic. Funding a nurse practitioner and prescriptions, testing, and consumable supplies. So the nurse practitioner is $21,840. That's for 12 hours a week. And the testing consumable supplies and prescriptions is $3160 for a total funding award of $25,000.
Motion to approve the Muncie Mission.
Second.
A motion to approve this agreement and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. The next one is the Recovery Cafe. This is roof repair and kitchen upgrades, totaling up to $20,000. $5,000 to support ongoing and expanding recovery programs, including school for recovery classes, peer support, recovery circles, hot meals, pantry, closet access, and healthy hobby exploration. They're doing good things down there at Recovery Cafe. This total funding award would be $25,000.
Move we accept.
Second.
We have a motion to approve this agreement and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next, we have stormwater on-call agreement.
Yeah, I'll take this one. So this is VS Engineering. And back in, I think it was a January 6 meeting, we approved VS Engineering to do our stormwater on-call analysis. So when somebody submits an application to the Planning Commission and the Building Commissioner, we pay the analysis. And this is one of the things I want to change in our ordinance. So the one that puts us over the top here, well, let me give a little more history. I think we approved, we didn't get an analysis back from VS, right? So my memory may not be exactly right here, but we approved like $20,000 or $25,000 in January. A few meetings ago, we approved an amendment to put an additional $15,000 towards that, thinking it would get us to the end of the year. And then this dollar general application resurfaced, and we're paying to have an engineering firm analyze their stormwater application. And I would like to change our ordinance separate. It'll be a separate action, but I would like to change our ordinance so that the applicant pays this. In the meantime, we've run out of funds. We've exhausted the funds that were approved January 6th, and that we approved an amended amount a few, a few meetings ago. So now we need to add more money to this if we're going to continue, continue like we are before the ordinances, proposed ordinance gets changed. And they're asking for up to 28, was it 28,000 total, Jenna? 28,500? Yeah. So, and not to exceed 28,500. To continue to process and analyze stormwater applications. So, you know, right now, I don't see how we can't do it.
Yeah.
But we're gonna, we're gonna change some wording in the ordinance.
I would like to amend the ordinance that, to the, with the language that says the applicant should pay for it, like dollar general.
I agree.
They should have to pay for this analysis, not us.
I agree 100%.
In the meantime, we're out of money.
So you have a motion to approve then?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion to approve this and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Then, John, can we look at that ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have, you know, do these all together?
Let's, no, please, they're, they're separate entities.
All right, let's do Humana Renewal.
Yep. So Humana, met with them on September 23rd, along with Josh Jarvis, our new HR leader, and Lee Royal, sent them back with some homework. We had a meeting, actually a call yesterday. This is for retiree group medical renewal. There are no premiums. Well, number one, this doesn't cost the county anything. It's only if a retiree wants retiree benefits. There are no premiums. There is one premium going to go from $0 per month up to $5 per month for one of our retirees that's living in northern Indiana. They're in the LPPO market. Other than that, there would be no changes and no cost to the county because, again, this is elective by retirees.
Any questions?
They've been around a while, man. I move we adopt.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Cobras, or no, I'm sorry, Mutual of Omaha?
Mutual of Omaha, thank you. So Mutual of Omaha Agreement, this has been brought to us through McGriff. So currently, the employees of the county use AFLAC as elective insurance. So if they want anything supplemental, additional life, or any other coverage, they're using AFLAC. And what I'll say about AFLAC is you can find better, but you can't pay more. It's the most expensive and it's not the best. So McGriff has done some work. They've come up with this Mutual of Omaha. I would say that it's going to lower costs and improve the benefits, and their online portal is much easier. HR will have a better way to understand this. It's going to be easier for them. There's a lot of work right now with AFLAC going back and forth. And I think it's not necessary. AFLAC's kind of complicated. The service with AFLAC is not very good. We often have to process a claim where they mail us back our premiums, the prices, and we have to tell them where to apply those. And I'd say that this will put Delaware County on par with other counties for elected services. So I would make a motion to approve Mutual of Omaha to replace AFLAC as our elective.
Second.
Motion to approve this agreement and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Cobra.
Yep. And this is a little bit ceremonial. This is the Administrative Service Agreement. McGriff has sent this to us since they've become our agent of record. Cobra is part of Solerix Network. This is mostly required by federal law. Not, no real change here. It's just a review and an adoption of our annual agreement for Cobra. Motion to approve.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next, we have a right-of-way agreement.
Yeah, there are actually two here. These were agreements with NDOT to do right-of-way exploration and acquisition. One of them is for a bridge replacement on County Road 600 South over Williams Creek. That bridge is between Honey Creek Road and County Road 300 West in Salem Township, so over by Daleville. And the first one is for $35,132. The second one is also a bridge. It is the bridge that's in Eaton Albany Pike over Reese Ditch between Pine Street and County Road 350 East in Union Township. And this one is for right-of-way activities at the rate of level, sorry, the level of $13,484. These are two bridges that are programmed into our tip.
I move we adopt both of them.
I'll second.
Because I understand that these are also federally funded. That's why we do the NDOT.
That's correct. These are Federal Highway Administration funded.
80% comes from them at some point.
Keep them happy.
A motion to approve and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next, we have Indiana Pump Works. Mr. Chambers?
Hello, my name is Don Chambers, Superintendent of Delaware County Maintenance. The original contract through Indiana Pump Works, they wanted to do a yearly contract or a monthly contract where they wanted to charge us $1,100 a month. We just had everything, everything in this pump system's all been brand new, and we haven't had any problems since they put it all in. I, I think it's, and I requested them to change it to every three months. It's still $1,100. I, I think that's appropriate enough. And with everything being new, I don't think it needs to be serviced every month, so.
I'll agree. And I'll say, Don, his team's done a good job getting that under control out there. I think we had quite a bit of problems with that. What's it called? The muffin monster that's ahead of that wet well out there? And the wet well, you know, was alleged to be a grinder pit. It's not. So we're somewhat under control. We've got the reversers installed now. So if it locks up, they reverse and they don't just sit there and burn up. We do still have an ongoing requirement that we have to skim the debris that's floating in the top of it on a semi-regular basis, kind of on an as-needed, I guess I would say. Currently, we're doing that with Cooley. Cooley's charging us $2,500 every time they pump it. I had a discussion with the District Administrator, the Muncie Sanitary District yesterday, and Tom Noble, he's their Superintendent of, let's see, construction, engineering, and sewer maintenance. And they are proposing to do it for us at the cost of $1,000 on an as-needed basis. So that's separate from this. But I'm just letting you know that Don and his team are working hard to get this under control. And I'm on the automatic texts and calls, and I haven't had one in months. So I'd make a motion to approve this quarterly health check, basically, from Indiana Pump Works at $1,100.
Second.
A motion to approve this agreement and a second rule call, please.
Make sure I clarify this. So is it going to be $1,100 every quarter?
Correct.
Versus every month?
Every month, that's right. Yep.
So this document?
Can we? Yeah, there's a.
There's an update right there. Sorry. What was it?
Yeah, what was originally there was every month, but that's a quarter. It went right there.
Okay.
Yep. We'll get you a clean copy because I've got my scribbles all over it.
Right. Can you take that?
Sure.
Okay.
Jenna, you got a clean copy? Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. We have an interlocal agreement that isn't, not on the agenda. This is something that the Commissioners have been working with the City of Muncie on for a few months now. McGaggyard Road, Delaware County gets money for, was it 2,600 or 1,600 feet?
About almost 2,600 feet, if I recall.
So that, some of that McGaggyard between Broadway, Martin Luther King there and the bypass, some of the, the county receives funds for a portion of that. So we've, we've been working with the city officials. We'd like to, that, that road specifically, the westbound lane, both lanes, is terrible. So we'd like to, the mayor, when we, when we start talking about this, the mayor has plans. I believe this is gonna, it's going to get total reconstruction in 2027. Is that correct? I think. So we're going to team up with the city and we're going to do some temporary work on McGaggyard to make it smoother, hopefully for the next, to get us by a couple of years, basically. So there's a little bit of the eastbound lane as well that's, that's going to get done. But this is an interlocal agreement with the City of Muncie to do that. And we're sharing, sharing funds. There's also a resolution to perform the work. Our county highway will be doing some paving out there. And so there's a resolution that goes along with this resolution, number 2025-21. The total cost of it's $77,523.12.
They hope to get it done before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we, yeah, we hope to get it done before, before the end of the year, for sure.
We're going to start on October 13th. So the, both westbound lanes between Shirey and Elgin are going to, the city's going to mill them. And then the county and the city are going to split the cost of materials, and the county's going to pave. So that's what's going to happen. Just to be clear, you're right, the total cost is $77,523.12. But the county's cost, which is part of this resolution, and this includes labor and, and cost of equipment, everything is $44,524.12. The city's cost, which is half of the materials, is $32,990. So in our $44,524.12 is half the materials at $32,990. But we valued our labor and the price of our equipment. And John can explain probably why a little bit better than I can. But anything under $250,000 doesn't have to be bid out. But Lyuna in the past has raised question about why projects like this were not bid out. And this is under $100,000, while maybe more of a formality than anything. But we just wanted to do this to clarify it for the record.
Right. There, there's a provision in law that allows counties to use their own workforce if they have the requisite skill, training, and ability to do the work. And it's less than, it's over $100,000, less than $250,000. You can use, or you can use restricted MVH funds for that. And the legislature created the process that the county has to justify why they want to use their workforce and make sure that they have an accounting of the man-hours, the equipment, and the materials used. So we did this back in 2017 and 2018 when the county was doing a lot of long paving, long roads of paving. And so there was a question raised by one of the local labor unions that it was thought that we just go ahead and adopt this resolution, showing that we have the, and our highway department does have the requisite skill. showing that we have the, and our highway department does have the requisite skill, knowledge, and ability to do this. And just to show that it's less than $250,000.
Make a motion to approve the interlocal and the resolution 2025 dash 21.
Second.
I, I don't have a copy of our local agreement.
Yeah, that's right there.
I went from a pack, right?
Yep.
So we have a motion to approve both of those. Do I have here a second?
Second.
You got them both, Ed?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. All right, next, we'll go to resolutions for approval. We have a resolution of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, transfer county-owned real property to East Central Indiana Regional Development District. This is a piece of, John, why don't you go ahead and talk about this?
This is for a piece of property up in Albany, the, on the west side of Albany. Many years ago, the Commissioners obtained a strip of land from State Road 67 and 28 all the way up to Gregory Road. That was anticipated to be a, a road for the fish farm. When they were operating and it seems that that road, while this is on the back burner, there, there may be, because of the way the legal description and the width of this, there's a small portion that may be able to be used for economic development. And so East Central Indiana was going to work with some local developers to, to take this .29 acre parcel and put a business on it. And so East Central Indiana does a lot of that for us and they've been really successful in, in getting these on the tax rolls. So it would take .29 acres off of, out of the county's control and then put it on to the tax rolls once it's developed.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
So this is to transfer that entire parcel and then Albany would be responsible for the road and they would receive the road funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This resolution doesn't do that yet. That's the next resolution. I'm still waiting on a legal description.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just that part.
Right, just that, just that small section.
Yeah.
There is a, there is a companion resolution which will become later when I get the legal description.
The next.
Because Albany's agreed to take over that particular road area as theirs. And then they can develop it as needed.
So this is only basically for the intersection of that?
Just for that.
For Bell Road and 6728 there.
Just for that. I don't even know what they call that road up through that little development.
It is.
It's Bell Road. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the request and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Mr. President, may I clarify something?
Go ahead.
So on the last, on the McGaughy Road, I believe we called it 2025 dash 21, and I believe it should actually be 2025 dash 22. The ready grant that we approved earlier is actually 2025 dash 21. So the next.
Well, I believe the, the, the ready grants and ordinance and.
The other's just a resolution.
The other one's a resolution.
Okay, that's one of the.
That's the difference.
We need to clarify the, the number then of that resolution for McGaughy Road. I'm not so sure that it's 2025 dash 21.
Ed, do you know what that would be?
No. What was the last one we had done?
We got 2020 on, on the, the agenda here. And so 2021, I don't know, 2021 would be the.
That's the one for the.
You know, for the, um, the resolution for the paving.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so it is correct.
I think so.
Okay, good.
I think we're, I think we're correct. Next, we'll go to a resolution, Resolution 2025 dash 19, Resolution of Delaware County Board of Commissioners to amend the process of the annual appointments of the employees. This is something that keeps coming up and I've, I've, I've wanted to get rid of this for a while now. I, I don't believe that our department heads, I don't believe they should be appointed every year. I think that's something that was done years ago. I feel like it's, it's kind of old school. I feel like that we have good department heads here and I don't believe that we should be approving them every year to, to keep their job. I, I think we have good people that work for the county and I just, I don't feel like this is a process that we should be doing any longer.
I agree. I think they should be subject to the handbook and if their goals are set by their Commissioner liaison and they meet their goals and they're performing properly, they should be able to keep their job. So this would remove the following annual appointments from the annual appointment list. And then again, they'd just be subject to the handbook and based on their actual performance. So the 911 Director, the Executive Administrator, EMA Director, EMS Director, the Highway Superintendent, the Human Resources Leader, the Veteran Services Officer, the Inspector for Waits and Measures, the Building Maintenance Superintendent, the County Information Officer, the County Engineer, and the County Attorney would all be removed from the annual appointment list. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. So department heads, please don't ask me at the end of the year if you're going to get appointed next year.
Just do your job.
Yeah, just, just keep doing what you're doing. Appreciate all of you.
Yep.
Next, we have a resolution of Delaware County Board of Commissioners, establishing reduction in force for the workforce of Delaware County. This is 2025 dash 20. Commissioner Brand, you want to speak on this a little bit?
Sure. So for the last, I don't know, nine months, we've been taking a look inside our organization, how we can be more effective and efficient. And there were eight opportunities to do a reduction in force and they're listed in this, in this resolution.
Any other comments?
I appreciate Commissioner Brand working on this because, you know, those of us around, sometimes we just forget to sharpen the pencil.
No, I, I think with, with some of the reductions the county councils faced this year, this is the year to, to do it. So I'd entertain a motion to approve 2025 dash 20.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. All right, next, we have department heads and elected officials. This Purdue Extension here.
They were.
They were.
Oh, there you are.
A bit crowded.
I, I understand.
Good morning. Molly Hunt, Area Director, Purdue Extension. I'm here with your local department head.
Justin Curley, Purdue Extension, Delaware County.
And we're here to discuss the 2026 contractual service agreement. I have had a chance to speak with a few of the Commissioners in advance and sent that contract on ahead to the attorney as directed for review. So happy to answer any questions about that or, or share more.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. Who'd you send it to?
I think you did send it to me.
Yes, at the time, Mr. Brooke was either on vacation or leave, so I sent it Jennifer, Jen.
Jenna?
I believe.
I don't believe I've seen it.
Anyway, we'll.
Let's, yeah, why don't you, why don't you give us the hard copies?
Okay. Sorry about that miscommunication.
And then let us, um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So who has this electronically?
I, I have it for sure and I think.
I could pull up who it was sent to. I'm sorry, it was sent a couple of months ago.
It, it was, it was. And we talked on the phone. Let, let me, let me, um, let us look at this.
Okay.
And, and come back next meeting.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion to table this contract and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. I apologize. I dropped, I dropped the ball on that one. That's, that's all me. I apologize. Next, we have the.
More department heads?
Yes, but we, uh, hang on. Go ahead, Mr. Cummings.
Fred Cummings, 911 Director. So I had sent the Commissioners back on September 27th, a request for funding from Edit or from some other place to pay for the partial cost to set up the redundant connectivity to the radio system. Sent you guys the packet, sent you the contract. It's a standard Motorola contract. This is something that we've been working on for a couple of years to try to get redundancy to the radio system connectivity. And Motorola has finally finished their system, changed the technology to something I'm comfortable with. So my original ask when I talked to two Commissioners was 30,000. I, I did find money in my budget, so I'm only asking for 15,000.
I appreciate you finding money in your budget. I, I believe this is something we could take out of.
Buildings.
Yeah, some, some of the Edit funds. But we, we definitely, I mean, I, I think we definitely need.
John, is it too late to change our Edit plan, say, buildings, equipment?
But I, I believe there's a capital expense line in there that could be used for this.
You do have that and you can modify your Edit plan anytime you want to. You have both options.
Can we table it next month?
It's just time sensitive.
We, we want to get it done before the end of the year, so there's a process and I want to make sure that it gets paid out of this year's funding.
Right.
So that's, that's my time sensitivity part of it.
I, I move we table it.
We have a motion to table. I'll second. And I would like to find a way to fund this also. We just need to figure out which Edit fund to pull it out of. We have a motion to table and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Matt Cans, Delaware County Council. Just a quick note of thanks. I want to show some appreciation for the collaboration and the work that you guys have done with the city on McGaughy. On behalf of all citizens of Delaware County that drive in on a regular basis and the, the investment being made to try to bridge that gap. So appreciate that, appreciate that work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department head or elected official? Okay, we have the holiday schedule. Everybody got a copy of for 2026? I would like to act on this due to the fact that the courts have to set their schedule.
So there are 15 holidays listed on here and, you know, I have a, I have a little bit of an issue with 15 holidays. Most of these are holidays that taxpayers don't get. So taxpayers are funding these holidays, but they don't get these holidays themselves. And I would like to remove some of these holidays from our schedule. Those being Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, and Juneteenth. Most employers in Delaware County that we compete with for people have seven holidays. Occasionally, they'll add a floater holiday around Thanksgiving or Christmas, bring in them to nine. There are 15 on next year's schedule because it's an election year, so there's a primary election holiday and a general election holiday on here. Typically, though, there are 13 holidays and I'm proposing to take that down to 10 in a non-election year. Again, because the taxpayers that fund these holidays don't get these holidays.
So you want to remove Martin Luther King Day, which is January 19th, President's Day, which is February 16th, and Juneteenth, which is June 19th?
That's correct.
That's your.
Motion.
That's your motion?
Yes.
I would recommend that we leave Martin Luther King Day and it's just my opinion.
Would you like to trade that for a different day?
Um, no, not really.
I'll agree to your schedule.
So. Would you make a motion to that?
So move. Yes.
Ed, did you get that?
So removing.
We're going to remove President's Day.
Yep.
And Juneteenth.
Correct. Got it.
And I will second that motion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
No.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. All right, thank you. Next, we have the 2026 Commissioner meetings schedule.
Yep, two of these are on a Tuesday. They're traditionally the first and third Monday of the month. But the second meeting in January will be on the Tuesday because of the holiday that we just approved. All right. And then the first meeting in September will also be on a Tuesday, September 8th, due to a holiday that we just approved.
Okay. Are you guys good with these dates?
I'm sure you're still keeping nine o'clock.
I like nine.
I always like to try to get 10, but I'll, I thought about 9:30, but that'd be.
I'd like seven.
Yeah, I know you like to get up early.
I like early. I'd make a motion to approve the holiday or the meeting schedule as presented here.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Seven o'clock. Wow.
He gets up at four.
Did you guys all receive your Waits and Measures report?
We did. And in the last meeting, we talked about modernizing the ordinance. Have you had any opportunity to look at modernizing the ordinance?
I'm Inspector Waits and Measures. Yeah, I've sent something over to Danielle.
Okay.
And I talked to a couple Commissioners, or I mean, a couple Inspectors within the state and came up with a couple ideas that we can add on to. And ones that we didn't have in our ordinance. We, a lot of what we, what I got back, we already had because I know at the time that our ordinance was put out, a lot of that was the template for a lot of ordinances. So.
Gotcha. I also want to acknowledge that the Waits and Measures Department lost their part-time person and I appreciate you making it work.
Thanks, sir. All right, next, we have payment of claims of $4,798,917.71. Some of those were lit totals and I do have a couple of questions on some claims. These are all for Circuit Court Two. Ed, that's asking for half to be paid before delivery.
They can't pay anything free.
So has, has, I, I will pass these to you. I've not signed them.
I didn't sign them.
Yeah, and I think Sherri signed one, but there, there's another one. So I'll, I'll pass these back to you.
Sure.
If you can try to let them know it's for office furniture, it appears. So if they figure that out, I would be more than happy to approve it. I just don't want to approve it because of the half payment issue.
Right.
All right. Any other, any other claim comments?
Did you pick, what the total would be then?
I, I didn't deduct that total.
We can make a general motion here in a second, but.
I can give you the two totals, sing out a month if you want.
Okay.
So one total is 44,49.36. The next one is 36,39. The next one is three, six, three, nine point three zero.
Forty-four, what'd you say? Forty-four, nine?
Forty-four, forty-nine.
Oh, forty-four, forty-nine. Point?
Three, six.
Go ahead. Commissioner Brand.
Yeah, thank you. So in our claims today, we had some revenue, uh, revenue sharing from the Riverboat, a hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Those are distributed to the incorporated towns and cities of the county. Um, there was a drainage maintenance total claims there, forty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, State Board of Accounts paid them nine thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Some tax sale redemptions, two separate ones on there. One for sixteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Another one for ninety-three thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, as President, uh, Henry mentioned, there was some local income tax certified shares came in at one million, three hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Public safety lit five hundred fifty-seven thousand, sixty-two dollars even. And Edit, uh, lit was eight hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Also, we spent, uh, two hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents on paving. That came out of our wheel tax. Ennskeeper tax received a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, there were some credit cards that still didn't have explanations. Some of them did. So we're making progress. Uh, one total claim that didn't have any explanation at all was sixteen thousand, one hundred forty dollars and seventy-four cents.
What, what was, what was that company name?
Office Products Outlet. OPO.
Correct.
So I'd entertain a motion for approval of the claims with the exception of the OPO claims.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
No.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next we have the payment of ARP claims of nine thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve those claims in a second. Any comments?
All good.
Roll call.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yep.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next we have the payment of payroll, uh, nine twenty-four, twenty-five, one million, eighteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-four cents.
Motion to approve payroll.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the payroll in a second. Any comment?
There were two payrolls on that. Did you catch?
Oh.
Both of them.
That.
There's one on nine twenty-four and then also on ten eight.
Two pays.
You want to do them separately?
That's, that's up to you.
No, I don't think so.
Let's do them separately.
Yeah, let's do them separately. I don't see ten eight on here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Go ahead. Go ahead. So we got, we got the one payroll.
Yep.
We got a motion in a second.
Yep.
Roll call on that one.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. And then we have a payroll. When was it? Ten eight?
October eighth. What was the amount?
One million, eighteen thousand, seven sixty-six and forty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve that payroll in a second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Next we'll move into, uh, public comments. You'll have three minutes, um, to speak, and we will go through the list. You guys okay to?
I'd like to do a break and sell some of our staff.
I was going to ask the same thing for.
Okay, okay. So, um.
Ten minutes, seven.
Yeah, let's take a break and meet back here. Um, let's meet back at a quarter till.
Thank you.
So ten forty-five, we'll meet back. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's two.
That's a majority.
Okay, everyone. Let's get started back again. It's seven forty-five. Before we start on public comment, the attorney sent me an email here in the break, and it's actually the ordinance opposing a moratorium filing and accepting any new applications for solar energy facilities. And it says, I'm gonna read this. It's twenty twenty-five dash zero five. Whereas Muncie Delaware County Metropolitan Plan Commission conducted several public zoning hearings with respect and amendments to zoning ordinance concerning solar farms and agricultural zones. And whereas the county plan commission conducted a duly authorized notice and debated public hearing concerning a proposed zoning ordinance amendment concerning the inclusion of the solar farms and agricultural zones. And whereas the amendment was properly noticed, reviewed, and recommended was made by the plan commission to adopt some changes to the zoning ordinance with respect to the solar farms. And whereas the board of commissioners received an amendment to the county zoning ordinance from the plan commission and made revisions to the initial proposal which were accepted by the plan commission amendment was adopted in twenty twenty-four. And whereas the board of commissioners have received other comments and concerns about incursions of potential solar farms, predominantly residential areas that would require further study and review, and additional amendments to the zoning ordinance. And whereas the board of commissioners have provided information as to issues and concepts to consider with regard to possible amendments to the current zoning ordinance regarding solar energy. And whereas the board of commissioners believe that the continuation of a moratorium on the filing and acceptance of any new applications for solar energy facilities during the study period to discuss other possible amendments to submit to the plan commission for their consideration, conduct public hearing for public input on those amendments. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the board of commissioners, Delaware County, Indiana, that number one, a moratorium that was to expire on March first, twenty twenty-five, shall continue in place until such time as the county has completed additional amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding solar energy for the acceptance and review of filing of any application by the person, firm, or entity seeking to place or install a solar farm on any property in Delaware County. Number two, nothing in this moratorium shall prohibit any person, firm, or entity to conduct discussions, negotiations, meetings, or provide information about solar energy, any proposed projects or information about said projects to any person or elected official's organization. Number three, said moratorium shall remain in effect until such time as the zoning ordinance is amended and adopted by the board of commissioners, or until such time as the moratorium is repealed by the active commissioners in the event that the zoning ordinance regarding solar energy is not amended. And this was adopted, or this copy I have, that says adopted in February twenty-five. So with that being said, correct me if I'm wrong, this moratorium would be lifted at that point of adoption. Am I correct by stating that?
That's correct, yes.
Is there any, anybody have any comments? So it's automatically lifted?
Yes.
Could you turn your mic on?
Turn your mic on, John.
I turned it off because I was clacking my key. By operation of the ordinance, it would be expired once you adopted the changes as recommended by the plan commission.
Okay. Any, any other comments, questions?
Nope.
All right. I just wanted to point that out so everyone's clear. Okay. Is everybody clear? All right.
Does that need to be early or?
Need to go up.
We have that list.
Yeah, I have it.
Sue Arrington, live in Muncie. Does that mean that the earlier motion that was passed to continue the moratorium is now null and void?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Unfortunately. So Sue, why don't you stay up there? So we're gonna go into public comment now, and everybody has three minutes to speak. Everyone, please be kind and respectful, and speak to us when you're speaking, and we'll start out with Ms. Arrington.
Thank you. Let's head, I live in Bunsey. My comments today are related to Senate Enrolled Act One, the property tax bill that passed last spring, and the ability of the solar developers to mitigate some of its negative impact on Delaware County taxpayers. Let me remind you that the Legislative Services Agency, which is a research and fiscal arm of the Indiana General Assembly, estimated the losses in property tax revenue, local government, and schools would suffer with the passage of S E A One, Senate Enrolled Act One. For Delaware County in twenty twenty-six, the amount is two-point-eight million dollars. Twenty twenty-seven, two-point-nine million dollars. Twenty twenty-eight, it balloons to four-point-eight million dollars. So how does this relate to the solar developers? A few days ago, I became aware of the efforts of Geronimo, the Royerton Project, to engage you in negotiations that would be very beneficial to the taxpayers and the government of Delaware County. Geronimo provided a draft economic development agreement, a term sheet with a financial offer, and the supporting calculations to your economic development committee back in May. The company continued efforts to engage you in discussions in the summer and again just last week. Your response to them? Silence. The Geronimo offer was to guarantee the depreciation floor in response to Senate Enrolled Act One. They offered to guarantee a twenty percent depreciation floor for their project, and to supplement that with conditional E D A payments so that the county would have a collective guaranteed minimum of four-hundred-and-ninety million dollars in annual tax revenue for the life of their project, which is usually thirty years. Other developers offered their own proposals. The public deserves to know how much revenue you are turning down. So where is the transparency? Don't we, the taxpayers, have a right to know that bringing these solar projects into Delaware County could mitigate a substantial portion of the property tax tsunami about to hit us? I hear word going around in the county building is that S E A One is going to cost fifty county employees their jobs. If those employees knew what the think you'd be hearing from them. These companies, and we, your constituents, are asking for two modifications of the solar ordinance. One, change the five-hundred-foot setback to two-hundred-and-fifty feet. And two, remove the property value guarantee. And thank you, Commissioner Rigan, for making that motion. These offers you are sitting on provide an effective solution that would lessen the blow of S E A One to Delaware County by supporting lower property taxes, mitigating increases in utility rates, and stabilizing local family-owned farms. I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda Hanson.
Thank you, and good morning. Linda Hanson, Muncie, with the League of Women Voters in Muncie, Delaware County. My concerns are many that Sue has just mentioned. I was startled to learn that at least one of the solar companies, Geronimo, has been trying to engage unproductively with the commissioners in a dialogue about the solar ordinance since January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And other attempts, January twenty-fourth, April seventeenth. While their concerns with the ordinance include setbacks and legality of the property value guarantee, as do the League's concerns, their efforts to open dialogue included a draft economic development agreement, a term sheet with a financial offer, and the supporting calculations sent to the Economic Development Commission back in May. Geronimo is clearly aware of the impact of S E A One to Delaware County, and their offer, which Sue has outlined, has been with the county since July without further discussion. This would immediately impact, or lessen, the impact of S E A One to Delaware County. We would like, as taxpayers, to see some action here. This inaction is inexcusable. Decision-making at the county level continues to emphasize public opinion, placing predominant influence in the hands of neighboring property owners rather than establishing clear county-led zoning regulations. All the knowledge, expertise, and experience that you've available to you seems to pale in the insignificance next to the value of a view shed. When the impact of S E A One truly hits Delaware County in twenty twenty-seven, you should have these projects in place. There'll be innumerable budgets in need of the revenue they can provide. Schools, police, fire, streets, housing, to name a few. Geronimo and maybe others cannot complete their development under the current or proposed setbacks. The impact of five-hundred-foot setbacks reduced the six-hundred, sixteen-hundred-and-ninety acres Geronimo signed to seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight acres that they can build on, allowing for only about fifty megawatts of production capacity instead of the planned hundred-and-forty megawatts. The proposed setbacks would also prevent them from compensating landowners as agreed prior to the five-hundred-foot setbacks being instated and in meeting the P G M capacity requirements necessary to fully utilize their land. So, yes, would like this to be reconsidered. The League would like the option for renegotiating setbacks removed. As I mentioned the last time I spoke to you, this only sets up for perpetuating bad feelings among neighbors. We would like to see the setbacks for nonparticipating residents set down to two-hundred-and-fifty feet, and the property value guarantee removed as sherry moved. So, given what you've done today, the fact that we know that the moratorium is no longer in place, can you clarify, you're sending clarifications to the plan commission? Is there any other room for movement on this at all?
Consider three minutes. Three minutes.
Thank you. I guess I'll respond to this. I was told when I took office back eleven years ago, twelve years ago, that ordinances are good until the next meeting. So I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you, I mean, if you think about that, that's, yeah, absolutely, it's correct. So, next is Robert Coaster, Coyster? Robert?
I don't see him here.
Mike Cattrall? Live on County Road seven hundred north? Mike Johnson?
Hello, my name is Mike Johnson. I live at one-one-seven-zero-one North Cannon Road, two-hundred west, Muncie, and I am a taxpayer. Property value guarantee should stay. They should stay, and so should the setbacks. Why is there so much contention here? Because the solar companies know exactly what's gonna happen. It's gonna reduce our property values. And when you lose property value, you lose quality of life. Plain and simple. I didn't prepare anything today. I just kinda write notes down as I go along. Loss of property value is loss of, is loss of quality of life. I want to recognize, I think we should, that we do have an Indiana representative here, Sue. I don't know what happened, but I hope you get well, and I hope you get better. You and I met briefly in two thousand and ten, probably.
Sir, listen, listen. Speak to, speak to the commissioners.
Oh, okay. I was part of the Brevini Wind Project, got hired there. We seen what a failure that was. I went there to build gearboxes, but they were gearboxes for windmills. And it just turned out to be a big failure. And I left there thankfully in time because it closed down. But fortunately, the building was repurposed. Muncie Power Products, I think, owns it now.
Correct.
Okay, they, you know, the cranes were taken out. I mean, it was repurposed. These industrial solar panels, oh, you ain't gotta go repurpose them. They're just gonna sit there and rot. And exactly, it's just, industrial solar, it's just gonna be a, nothing but blight and wasteland. That's what this is gonna look like. I want to thank the commissioners for a lot of the work in the city that's being done with the roads. East MacGyver needed it really bad. I appreciate being taken care of. And also, there's a lot of road projects going on, a lot of street projects, road projects. I see it all over the place. And you know what? This is happening before the so-called industrial solar is gonna help with this, and help with that, and help with this, and help with that. We got nice schools. We got a beautiful Delta High School where I live. I mean, come on. I mean, I'm just, I think I speak for a lot of people that are against this, that it's just, it's just not the right way to go. People want to put a solar panel in their yard, or on their house, or whatever, fine, but the industrial solar farms, this is not the place. It's not the place for this with all the houses and everything that's around here. It's just, it's a no-brainer. That's all I have to say. Sorry. Have a great day, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Cheryl Dawson?
Good morning. Yeah, it's still morning. Cheryl Dawson. I live out north, the corner of State Road twenty-eight and Wheeling Avenue. I too am a taxpayer. My taxes went up three-thousand dollars last year. They'll go up again this year. And because of that new tax law, I'm gonna drop my appeals, that I'm gonna do it this week for the buildings, because I know our county needs the money. And this conflict we're having on the solar, I think it's been approached wrong in the whole state. I was reading online that the county commissioners in Allen County in the last couple of months passed a one-thousand-foot setback for their solar ordinance. I read that Whitney, Whitley County has a fifteen-hundred-foot setback. Other counties have setbacks greater than five-hundred. And I don't know. I guess my view on all of it is solar's fine, but the public utility companies should have done the hard work to find land, to negotiate, to approach it as a win-win for the landowners who would sell their land. And then the public utility companies should be the ones building them and owning them in their portfolio for energy. The way we're doing it, a lot of the farmers who have signed leases, they're not hurting. A lot of them are older, larger farmland owners, large operators. And this is gonna be a huge windfall for them. And of course, it's business for the solar companies, too. It's all about money. I understand the tax dollar issue. I think we could have gotten to that point if we had approached it all differently. And I think, you know, maybe the state should have set the tone for that. But they are leaving it up to the counties to set these ordinances. And I thank you that you passed it today and kept the property value guarantee in place and the five-hundred-foot setback. The one thing, I sent a letter this past week to the commissioners, and I also forwarded one to the plan commission. My concern is this is starting with private owners and private companies. And therefore, I don't feel like, as a non-participant, private landowner next or close to this, that I should have to have anything to do with it if I've chosen not to sign leases. So I, my concern is that eventually I N M's gonna wanna run power lines through me somehow. And so I am concerned about that. I'm concerned about imminent domain issues that have not been addressed in our state. But they are being addressed in other states, such as Kansas, who have passed laws that imminent domain cannot be used to build or expand these projects. And so I'm just hoping that our county government officials and planning commission will keep that in mind going forward if these solar companies proceed to build these. And I want to say thank you to all the government people, officials, and employees who deal with all of these issues. I didn't realize how much you all deal with, I mean, topically speaking, all the issues you address, until I started coming to the county commissioner meetings regarding solar. And I'm very impressed with your knowledge and everything you deal with. This aside on how I feel about the solar. But anyway, I thank everyone who works hard for our county, and I ask for protection for the private, non-participant landowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dan Berry. Dan Berry?
Morning.
Good morning. Morning.
I like to talk about the solar this morning. And I look at the solar as a business wanting to come to Delaware County. And the way this has all been handled, and Delaware County's stance on business the last thirty years, I've seen a lot of business get chased out of Delaware County and has ended up in surrounding counties. So the developers are a private company wanting to come in here. But you're making it so restrictive that it's hard for them to make, make any money. So I wonder if you do that to other business that is looking for Delaware County? When you have one set of rules on the books, and a business approaches you, and then you say, oh, wait a minute, we better change the rules here a little bit. We've got somebody interested. I think we could get more money out of them. Then what does that say to any other business that might be looking here at Delaware County? I'd also like to say that, you know, the money that's gonna be coming in from these other developers, and I know the county has already given a tax abatement to Invenergy, which I think tax abatements are just legalized blackmail. And I don't agree with them at all. But why would the county give up tax money just to get a business in here, more than what it's gonna be worth? And I'd also like to say that, you know, the setbacks and the property value guarantee, you talk about the property value guarantee, who is going to enforce that between the company and the landowner? If they can't agree on something, are the commissioners gonna go out and say, well, you have to agree to this number, or not? So, and I also like to say, the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback that a lot of people don't want, they want more than that. You talk about view shed. I think ninety percent of the opposition that is against this, if you would look at where they live, a lot of their properties, where their house is at, there's another house or road closer than two-hundred-and-fifty feet. I think two-hundred-and-fifty feet off the road is more than enough for people driving down the road and other nonparticipating people to be away from the solar panels. And it's not much different looking at solar panels than it is looking at our cornfields this time of year, when they're eight feet tall. So I think that's just all, all wrong. And, you know, this is all being done on private property. The county does not have any money involved in this, where I've seen some other projects, and the other person was talking about it. And I remember when Delaware County put the rail spur in for a Brevini, and what they had to pay for that.
That's just three minutes.
That didn't work.
That's time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joe Russell.
Chair's pretty comfortable. Joe Russell, three-five-zero-one, east seven-hundred-north, Eaton, Indiana. I want to thank Linda and Sue and Dan. They said most of what I was gonna say. to thank Linda and Sue and Dan. They said most of what I was gonna say. I will say, if I owned a newspaper in Muncie, my headline tomorrow might be Delaware County Commissioners Deny Local Farmers, Landowners, Their Children and Grandchildren $200 Million. A secondary headline might be strap, cash-strapped Delaware County Leave $60 Million on the Table From Solar Over the 30 Years. That's significant money. The, I have a feeling this is gonna go the way of the CAFO ordinance. In our books, it sounds like we're ordinances, we're friendly to CAFOs, but if you read the text, there's no place to build it. If you read the, this we might be, may sound like we're friendly to solar, but when you get into the text, I don't think any company's going to accept the property value guarantee or the huge setbacks. I've talked to five companies, and all five said those are project killers. So, I guess time will soon tell on that. Right? The one concern I have is the loss of property rights. You know, from day one in this country, life, liberty, and property were pretty sacred. And they still were until just recently. And now, and I never thought I'd see the day that Delaware County is telling me what I can and can't do on my land when it's approved practices. If the four projects proposed for Delaware County were located in Jay Blackford or Randolph County, they'd probably be under construction today. So, what's the difference? We're in Delaware County, and they're not. So, I'm really concerned what the headlines are gonna splash across the state. Delaware County approves solar amendments without the fine print thing, but no one's gonna come. So, I think we've tried to micromanage this to the point that no one's gonna come. It's been a four, four-year road we've traveled down. Shannon and Cherry, you were on the original group that approved the, the original amendment. It's green light for, for solar. And now, we've devolved to probably nothing's gonna happen. So, I'm anxious also to see if, if anyone locates here, because I'm told over and over that these are not friendly terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Heinz?
Morning, Commissioner. Stephen Heinz, 2706 South Combe Avenue, Muncie. It's a great day to be a citizen in Delaware County. Three things I want to thank you for is the help with the city on East MacGyver. The second thing is the mental health facility. I think that's gonna pay big dividends for our county, and I really appreciate that from you guys. The third thing is the solar ordinance. I really appreciate all the work you guys done to this. It's not been a short or easy road at all. You guys did a lot of good work on this, and I want to thank you for that. Two more things to address comments that were made by other public speakers. We're at our max levy. And so, what a lot of people don't understand is that these projects are not gonna bring any new money to this county at all. And then the second thing is, we do have property rights in this county, but no one can just do with their land with what they want. There's a planning commission, there's a board of zoning appeals, and other people in this county have a say, too, on what happens near their property. So, my sincerest thank you. That's all the time I use.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have, that's all public comments. Have final thoughts? Commissioner Riggan, do you have anything?
Commissioner Henry, could I speak one more time, real quick, as a general public person?
Go, go ahead.
Okay. Matt Hanson, I just wanted to clarify a couple things. And to Mr. Heinz's point, the county is at a max levy as well. So, any tax payments would be spread across those subsequent homeowners in the general vicinity. And so, that's where, where that cost savings was. But relative to Representative Arrington's statement about the EDA offer from the Royerton Project specifically, a couple points of clarity on that. One is that the payments at the earliest would not start until 2031, assuming that the project was approved and actually was built. So, that's several years past the dramatic impact that we're gonna see from SEA one. The 20% minimum assessment floor that is mentioned in this EDA agreement, well, number one, I'm not even sure if that that's legally allowed. We would have to have that checked out. But regardless of that, assuming that, that the payment that they mentioned, a minimum payment of $490,000 be paid on an annual basis, there's no end date to that. So, if this is a 10-year agreement, I think that's where she got the, the $49 million number. However, these economic development payments do assume and have assumptions associated with them. A few of them here are subject to law. Commissioners shall approve an ordinance revision to allow a setback of 250 feet from a nonparticipating, unoccupied residential structure, and no less than 150 feet from a occupied dwelling and elimination, and elimination of any property value guarantee. The commissioners will also publicly support the application of the project before the BZA and Drainage Board, and the commissioners will take no action to interfere with the issuance of an improvement location permit for the project, assuming BZA approval and compliance with ordinance requirements. So, the money comes with strings attached to it, specifically the talking points that have been shared here over and over again about the 250-foot setback, or 150 feet in this case. So, again, the dollars, in my opinion, are not accurate and need to be reviewed. $490,000 a year sounds great, except in 20 years when the county may be holding the bag and actually having to decommission the majority of these projects. So, I appreciate the work that you guys have done and, and sticking to your guns on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner Riggan?
Yes. We need to invite the public. They'd like to stay for our stormwater meeting afterwards. And I'd also like to thank the CEP group that is providing the entrance at the, at the Wheeling Fairgrounds. New flowers that we want to beautify the fairgrounds a little bit. It's gonna be power washed, and it's a gateway into the fairgrounds, which is looking very nice. But the CEP and Minatrista are working together and drive by next time you're out that way. Thank you.
Commissioner Rinn?
Yeah, thank you, President. HR's out this week. Just want to remind everybody, so if you need something from Human Resources, you can contact Jenna or myself. Jenna, that will then be out next week, the 12th through the 18th. If you need something from Jenna, contact me. Open enrollment for our healthcare starts a month earlier this year for a couple of good reasons. It is gonna start on November 18th, and it will run through December 4th. That's due to the changes from Apex to McGriff, and it will also give the Auditor's Office time to get all the changes entered into the system. And they've always been under the gun because of the holidays associated with Thanksgiving and Christmas. So, I think it gives the Auditor's Office the adequate amount of space, and it gives the employees adequate amount of time to make informed decisions. It is harvest season, so please pay attention to the farmers on the road. I personally witnessed a couple of close calls with people that are impatient, and it just shouldn't be that way. Just give them a little bit of space and a little bit, a little bit of grace. I can assure you that any incident of vehicle versus farm equipment, vehicle loses. So, please, please pay attention there. I was also glad to see that the feds are gonna take some action and help our farmers out, somewhere up to about $15 billion in support for, for soybeans. So, I think that's a great thing. Burlington Drive, we razed, basically tore down and blocked off the old Rosewood Manor on Burlington. I've received a lot of positive feedback from, from citizens that live out there. So, great job to the building commissioner for getting that torn down. Great thank you to the Highway Department for getting that thing all blocked off, and that prevents people from getting back in there and dumping. And we're, we are being a lot, a lot more proactive with tearing down blight. And we've put more money towards that this year, and for the next two and a half years in our edit plan. Want to make a big thanks to the Highway Department. I think it was Mr. Johnson that made a comment during his public comment section about the number of roads that are getting done. I don't know the exact number yet, but probably somewhere around twice as many roads will get done this year, as have been done in the past. And they just do a terrific job with roads. Culverts, we really got on the culvert band this year, and took care of probably twice as many culverts as we've done, and the brush clearing that they've done. So, Tommy, please tell everybody at the Highway Department, thank you for all the hard work they do. And I've had many public comments of appreciation towards the Highway Department. We did put a burn ban in place on September 17th, so that was an emergency declaration, the first one for 2025. I've been asked, you know, what's it gonna take to lift that? It's gonna take some time and some moisture. So, you know, that's probably not coming anytime soon. Purdue is hosting a nuclear energy summit on November 5th. I plan to attend that. You can go on Purdue's website and sign up if you'd like to attend. You know, some Purdue, they basically do whatever they get paid to do. They write an article that says, hey, preserve farmland, and then they write an article that says you can do something else with farmland. So, they get paid. They'll talk about whatever they get paid to do, but they are having that nuclear energy summit. Also, an announcement for county employees, IU Health Clinic has reduced their virtual hours. It was 24 hours a day. I don't know if this is a result of changing away from IU Health or, and going to Marathon or not, but now the hours of operation are very narrow. There are 12-hour span between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. So, if you're trying to reach virtual health options outside of those hours, you probably won't be able to reach anybody. Again, IU Health's virtual hours are now 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., no longer 24 hours a day. And then a couple of clarifications on the public comment. I've responded to every single communication that's come to me, either verbal or written. So, to say that things have gone ignored or unresponded to is simply not true. An EDA is separate from an ordinance. It's also separate from property taxes. So, I think confusing those two things, you know, adds more, more complexity into this than needs to be added. And an EDA can still be put into effect. So, I'm, you know, we'll see if the companies decide to go through the process. And I believe some of them will. And EDAs, it says right in the ordinance that they shall be, be done. So, an EDA is separate from an ordinance, has nothing to do with an ordinance. I think that's it. Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you. We will start the stormwater meeting. Do you guys need five minutes?
Yeah.
We'll start the stormwater meeting at 11:30. So, to entertain a motion to recess this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Most recess and a second, we'll call it.
Brian? Yes.
Mr. Riggan?
Yes.
Yes. We're in recess.
Yes.